Good day. My name's Carter Terranzini. I am the Templeton Town Administrator. And the show you're about to watch for the next hour is called Talk of the Town. It's an opportunity for us to bring in different department ads, people who are working on projects in town. And today I have two folks that I'm pretty sure you'll recognize. To my right, your left, Carol Harris, our Town Clerk. And to my left, your right, Derek Hall, the Town Moderator. And you may have seen them around, you may have chatted with them a little bit, but you may not know much about how they came to be in Templeton and what their background is. So Carol, I know you've just been excited to be here.
Oh, yes.
Just (laugh). I told her the day we talked about it, I said, "I really wish I'd had the video of her face when we agreed we were going to do this." But just tell the folks a little bit about your background and how you happened to become the Town Clerk here, which is an elected position?
It is elected.
Okay.
Yes. I've lived in town all of my life, and I did become the Assistant Town Clerk in 2001. Then in 2003, the Town Clerk at the time retired, so I was appointed to the Town Clerk's position until the next annual town election.
Okay.
So I've held the position of Town Clerk since 2004.
Okay. And Derek, how do you happen? Tell us a little bit about your background. You've got some schooling, I know.
I came here in 1996. I was part-time. I went through the full-time police academy. We purchased a house in 2000, and I live in town with my wife and my two kids. Yeah, I've obtained my master's degree in criminal justice since then.
Where'd you get that?
The master's was out of Anna Maria College.
Okay.
So I was actually sworn in in a select board meeting, and they asked me how was I guaranteed that I was going to stay. And here I am ever since then, when I first got sworn in, full-time. Now I'm sergeant, made my way up through the ranks.
So you may run into him in that other role, hopefully only when he's at a meet-and-greet or a neighborhood parade or something. But most of our discussions today will be in your role as Town Moderator. And you have been elected to that twice now, is my understanding?
So yes, I was asked several times. I tell a very different story, but...
But this one will be going out to everyone all at once?
Basically, we were in need of a Town Moderator, so I was asked several times by several different people in town, and I agreed to it. I was an intern or a temporary just for that meeting. Subsequently, ran for that position. I was elected, and I've been here ever since assisting with the Town Moderator position.
And I've noticed that in each of the meetings I've been with you, you've been very careful to step back from whether it's a capital item or the operating budget, something, any article with respect to the Police Department. Do you want to comment on that at all?
Absolutely correct. I don't want any conflicts of interest. I was asked to the position for the good of the town, not just for the Police Department. As we said, it's obvious that I worked for the Police Department as well, but my goal for being moderator was not just the Police Department. So anytime there's a conflict, Carol doesn't like it.
So Madam Moderator Temp on occasion?
On occasion, yes.
She comes up and fills in, and then I'll just go back and forth. So if you see that in a town meeting, those are the reasons why. But yes, we get along just fine.
We do.
Fill in and get the whole meeting done.
Yes.
Okay. Now Carol, so let's talk a little bit about some of the responsibilities of your office. And I know that's going to involve town meeting, and then we'll be bringing Derek in and out of that conversation. But what are the responsibilities of your office?
Well, the Town Clerk's Office is in charge of running the elections. We have to make sure there's people available, order ballots, test ballots, report all the data to the state and different departments. We also do licensing, dog licensing, raffles, marriage licenses. We also have to take care of the vital records, death, marriage, birth. We have to certify them from the state, attend town meeting, and take all the minutes for that, the agendas and minutes of the various boards. And the annual town census and street list, too, that we're in charge of.
So I'll be trying to help you get some shameless plugs in here for upcoming dates. And I noticed that one of the things that you mentioned was licensing dogs.
Yes.
And I've seen Cheryl doing those bright orange flyers that'll go into the annual census. So do me a favor, if you could, and talk to people for a moment about the importance of the annual census, how that's used, and what that bright orange flyer is all about.
So the census is important for as far as the state in getting grants for the town, and it just lets everyone know the different, you know, whether the criteria of who lives in the town and things like that. The bright orange flyer, that's for licensing your dog. And that's just to remind people to license their dog so that they aren't, they don't end up getting fines later on, you know? And it's a state law that your dog be licensed by March 31st.
March 31st, they'll be able to, those census forms, are we required by the state to do that annually?
We are, yes. And they will go...
And that's separate from the federal census?
Correct. And they will be going out in the beginning of January, and you can purchase your licenses January 2nd until March 31st.
Okay. And what if I should forget to do that?
Then unfortunately, there is a late fee of $25. And then if that goes further, then there is a citation that the Animal Control Officer will issue.
And I need to have my rabies certificate, do I, or does a vet mail? Fax that over to you?
It's best to contact the Town Clerk's Office ahead of time, just to make sure that we do have that information. A lot of times, the vets are actually required by the state to send them to us, but that doesn't always happen.
So not everyone follows the requirements, is that what you're...
Sometimes.
I'm sure you find that in some of your line of work, your non-moderator line of work as well?
On occasion.
On occasion, okay. So one of the things that you mentioned was town meeting responsibility with respect to the annual town election, which this year will come after the start of the town meeting.
Yes, we have changed where the town meeting will be first, and the town meeting date will be Wednesday, May 15th. And then the annual town election will be Monday, May 20th. So that's something new that the town voted on.
Okay. And so we're going back to a weeknight?
We are.
Town meeting?
We are.
And the theory, the hope, being that we can get attendance back up a little bit? My understanding from you is that attendance dropped a little bit after a while when you went to Saturdays?
It did. In the beginning, Saturday looked like it was going to be prosperous as far as getting people to come out, but it slowly declined. And so I'm hoping that the weeknights were busier prior to that. We were getting to 300 people, and now we're getting sometimes 50 to 100.
And so one of the reasons for the move back, the select board, is not only hoping to increase the attendance again, but they wanted to have the town meeting occur before the town election, so that if there did happen to be ballot questions, there would have been an opportunity to discuss things at the town meeting. So we'll be looking over the next few months as to whether or not, we should always make sure that ballot questions are the first few articles of the meeting, so in case the meeting gets adjourned. Now, you've had people talk to you about, you know, you let this go on too long at a meeting, or there was a motion to adjourn that was on the floor. What are some of the more interesting comments that have been made from people about why they didn't go to town meeting, or the things you should be doing? Because we've had a lot of conversation over the last month, particularly with the select board, of trying to find ways to get more people involved and improve that attendance.
I'm not sure if I would repeat all of the comments that we've seen. However...
Well, the ones that you can share.
On some of the comments is basically two-sided. One side says, "Okay, that person's been up there enough, shut them off. Don't let them speak anymore." They may call them some names or something like that, which is not appropriate. The other side that I've heard is when we have somebody up there that has a lot of knowledge of whatever the topic may be, be it, we'll say, an architect, maybe somebody with a higher degree of knowledge, whatever we're talking about in that article, it's tough to please everybody, of course. Okay? But the problem being is, I'm trying to be fair about it for everybody. Again, I don't go in it just for one reason, one article, one whatever. I think that Article Number 1 is just as important as Article Number 28. I don't think everybody wants to stay there all that long time, and I understand that. But if you have the microphone, you have that right to be heard and to express whatever it may be. The only thing I would say is that when you do have a microphone, use it wisely. You know, there's a lot of good information that comes out from these town meetings. There's a lot of things, you know, budget, I mean, you name it. But if you're up there asking a question, please don't ask the same question that somebody already asked, okay? If there was a public forum or another meeting where that probably could have been asked, excellent, you probably should have went to that instead of asked that question at the town meeting, for the most part. Now, I'm not saying don't ask a question at the town meeting, because that's what it's for, discussion, but use it wisely. That's one of the things that I've heard from a lot of people is, "Oh, you should have stopped so-and-so from talking. Oh, I wish so-and-so would have talked more, because I was really interested in what they had to say." It's difficult to regulate that sometimes.
So it's a balance. Some people come in, they've had an opportunity, they've looked at all the materials, they're pretty well set on what they want to do, they want to get their business done, and go home, where others perhaps did not have that opportunity to review all those materials or are really interested in everything. They're okay if it lasts for a fairly much longer time. So how do you set that balance? Because there is, can be a little bit of fatigue. I've seen some meetings go, you know, they started at 7:00, and they're still there at 11:30, and the moderator will say, "Okay, folks, what do you want to do? You know, we're going to push through, or do you want to come back another night?" I mean, there's lots of different points of view.
Absolutely.
How do you, how do you go about balancing all of that?
Well, again, trying to be fair about it. The people that show up, they want to be heard. So I would like to hear more from them about what they want to do, how they want to do it, how long do they want to stay? Do things want to change? Are they happy the way they are? I think that's part of the reason for this meeting, as well as some of the other ones we've had, what's more efficient. There are things that we have to abide by, okay? We use town meeting time, and there are some obvious, you know, bylaws, there are some things like that that we really can't change and we have to go by. But to use it in a more efficient manner, there are different ways that you can do it, but is it something that everybody wants to do? Because we've been doing it this way for, you know, the past 100 years, doesn't necessarily mean it's right or the most efficient. And I think that's, some of this discussion is we can come up with ways to make it better. Not necessarily faster, better, faster, whatever you want to call it. We've actually made, prior to this meeting, we've made much progress already. Some of the articles, we've chosen to not read every single word. We used to, I'm not sure the exact date, but we used to have the budget, and we would go line item by line item, and that would take forever.
Well, I will say that this year, the budget will be presented to the select board, I believe it's February 27, and usually within a couple of days, we have the budget, every single line item, up on the web for people to look at. And I know in the new web rebuild, we'll be working with you on the town meeting pages.
Great.
And we have a copy at the library, and we have a copy here at the office. And we also have started to, since I've been here, release a draft warrant. We try to have the warrant as complete as possible, so that people can really get a sense of what's going on and start to get behind it. Now hopefully, people will get a chance to see that, will watch some of the televised meetings on Templeton Community Television, Channel 8, if they watch it there, or on YouTube, if they watch the recorded version. Somebody the other day said to me, "They didn't realize that you could watch it on Channel 8." I think that they had just switched from Dish, or one of the satellite services, over to cable. So yes, folks, it's on Channel 8, and they have a schedule that rolls there, so you don't have to wait to, when you want to get on the internet and find out that your kid gaming in the next room is crashing the system, because they need, they need more bandwidth for their game than you need just to watch, watch the video. So we're going to have a lot of those kinds of meetings, and that'll be up on the web. But we've also talked about, really sort of trying to reach out to the community on different ideas. And I know that you talked with other moderators and such. So what would that be? Just something like this, where the community at large can come in and give some suggestions? What are your thoughts there, Mr. Moderator?
I think that's a great idea. I'm open to suggestions. I think it's, again, the ultimate vote is done by the town. I've been asked that several times about the decisions that were made, which have to understand is, I can make decisions in the meeting, but at the end of the day, when the vote is taken, it's done by the people. And if the people want the meeting to run this way, and we can get more people to show up, more of an input, excellent. That's exactly what we're looking for. We had a meeting, and we suggested, "Let's have a public meeting. Will people come in and ask us? We can sit wherever the venue is going to be, here or wherever." I'm hoping it'd be in at least the Kiva, if not, maybe the auditorium, meaning a larger crowd, okay? You can only fit somebody in here. But the more people that come in and have input, we can take that under advisement and maybe change some things. It goes more efficient, a little bit faster, a little bit, and people are happier and better, and more people show up. Traditionally, the meeting's been, you know, kind of long, drawn out, and it's difficult. Some of the stuff can get dry, okay? Some of the stuff, you know, you have an interest in, once that interest is done, then they leave, you know? Again, as a moderator, Article 1 is just as important as Article 29, to me. It's difficult for that sometimes when we have a large crowd for a particular article. I'm fair about every article.
Now, we did talk about having a meeting, yourself, the moderator, perhaps myself, in which we would ask citizens to come in and ask the moderator questions. Did you think about this? Did you think about that? What about this? Someone mentioned to me, some of the elderly would prefer that the meeting start a little bit earlier, not, you know, certainly everyone needs to be able to get home from work, get cleaned up, have some dinner, but perhaps a little bit earlier. So that meeting could toss that kind of idea around. Somebody mentioned childcare. So that meeting would, then you would hear all of these kinds of things?
I'm not opposed to either one of them. I think if we can, maybe get started a little earlier. If we need to go a little later, or if we can get done a little earlier, I think that's, they're all positive. What's happened in the past is, you know, if we have a particular article, they've had childcare, and we've had a greater turnout. So let's have childcare for every article.
Right. Every meeting is, I mean, yes, there may be something that's larger, something that's a little more controversial, something that is of a little greater interest to more of the community. But you're right. Every article determines how the community's going to operate, how it's going to be organized, how much money it's going to spend on different things. So this, this meeting would be to hear all these different kinds of suggestions. And I think you did have a chance to talk to the moderator about a date for that?
Yes, we have that scheduled for Tuesday, January 29th.
Tuesday, January 29th, 6:30?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll try to get that shameless plug in here once or twice more. As it gets closer, we'll get something up on the exact location, Kiva room, if you think we'll have that kind of interest. We'll try to gauge the level of interest we might have, otherwise, you know, maybe right in here, Steve's set up. But yeah, that would be terrific, to have a great turnout for that kind of thing.
Well, I think it gives everybody the opportunity to have some input.
Yep.
And then when we do make a change at the town meeting, people asking questions about how and why and whatever, well, if you came to the public meeting, you could have some input in it. And we're not saying we're going to change anything. It may stay exactly the same, or we may change a whole bunch of things.
And depending upon how many people show up, there's an opportunity to maybe do a survey of the community at large on that. They're not scientific. We don't have absolute, we don't have that kind of budget. But we've done online surveys on different things in other communities I've been in. And, you know, I sort of look at it as a temperature taking to get some different ideas. Now, just to make sure everybody understands, if I want to vote in the town election, which will happen on the Tuesday following the town meeting, yes?
It'll be on the Monday.
On the Monday, okay.
Yes.
I have so many days in which I have to register, but if I want to be in the town meeting, I have different days I need to register, yes?
Yes.
Great. You gotta, you gotta love it when there are different rules or different names. You know, the one I love is free cash, retained earnings, and excess and deficiency. They all mean the same thing. Different rules for the same thing. I want to register to vote to be at the town meeting. How many days ahead do I have to do that?
You have 10 days.
I want to vote at the town election, how many days?
You have 20 days.
20 days?
Yes.
Okay, great. So the town meeting comes first.
Mm-hmm.
So what's the earliest? What's my drop date to register to vote, to participate in this spring's community election and town meeting?
Thursday, April 25th.
Okay. So April 25th, an important date. Best thing to do is when you're coming in to register your dog.
Exactly.
March 30th?
March 30th is the deadline.
March 30th, you can register to vote, and you'll beat both deadlines at the same time. Excellent. Now, you mentioned, there were some articles that we didn't read. I think there were three this last time?
Yes. I have no problem making changes like that for the best interest of the town and of the time in the meeting. There's no need to read every single number and dot and word, especially if, you mentioned it earlier, you already have the material in front of you. You were given the material prior to the meeting. And depending, I know we did have a meeting down at the gym, but for the most part, and Steve does a great job as well, putting it up on the screen for everybody, okay? To hear somebody read that again, and I got to be honest with you, some of those X, L, I, V, whatever, I don't know if it's 10, 20, 50, 7, whatever, it makes somebody look a little bit like...
You didn't attend Caesar's class on Roman numerals?
No. So some of those kinds of things, okay, not that we're here to make fun of anybody, but, I mean, you know, we're up there acting in a professional manner, and they don't know it's Roman numeral 55 or whatever, which is fine, but you can see it in front of you. I take more time saying, "Okay, so that's a 10. Oh yeah, that's definitely a 5. That's a..." You know what I'm saying? When you have it in front of you, and you already know what it says.
Well, one of those articles was, I think, related back to the dog issue. The old bylaws was virtually out of date. I mean, obsolete, didn't meet any of the statutes currently in place. And that was a five-page rewrite.
Yes, yes.
The others, I think, were one-page rewrites. Now, I'm not suggesting that everything should be waived, because many of them are fairly quick and easy to read. But we've been talking about codifying the town's bylaws for about two and a half years now we've been working on this.
We started at the end of 2016, November.
And how many pages is that, Madam Clerk?
Right now, the Red Line draft is 203 pages.
203 pages. And I believe that there are about five sections the town council's working on that needed some dramatic rewrite or are new to be added?
Correct.
Or need to be rewritten to address the Attorney General's concerns?
Exactly, yes, correct.
And those, any idea how many more pages there?
Those were quite lengthy. I would say probably another 40, 50.
So that's a total of how many?
250.
About 250 pages, if we were to read them all. Now, I just want to go back, though. I think that you're planning to have a public meeting on those, to get them out as early as we can?
Yes, actually, we're planning on putting them on the website, the Red Line Draft.
The backup, yep.
Yes, on the December 20th. And then the hearing, or not hearing, well, the informational meeting will be on, let's see, that'll be January 15th at 6:30.
So that's, that's part of our effort, to try to get as much material out as early as we can. I know that, you know, for some of us, we live, sleep, eat, breathe this stuff, and by the time we get to it, we're pretty well done. But the idea is that we'll have this, and I hope you get a chance to attend that, if that's not one of your scheduled shift evenings. So we'll have this document up on the web around October, excuse me, December 20.
Correct.
Which will give people about three, four weeks?
Yeah, get a chance to look it over.
To start to look it over. And then we'll have the public meeting here in this room on January 15.
Yes, at 6:30.
At 6:30. We'll have town council present. They'll make a presentation, the clerk will be here, get as many questions as we can, possibly do some edits or just at least try to address any questions that we get, and then have it back up hopefully by the end of February, so that we can keep this thing constantly updated. Now, I know there was some concerns last time that people talked about reading it, but it was in the voter's guide printed at some length, wasn't it, if I remember right?
And I think both of those things are excellent points prior to the meeting. You have the voter's guide, we're going to put it on, because now it's all technology, okay? We're going to put it on our webpage, the internet, right? So anybody can have access to it. The voter's guide is out ahead of time. I think what the problem was, maybe in the past, and not putting any blame, but in the past was, we would make a change, people weren't able to see that change. They'd come to the meeting and say, "What is this change? Why? How? Whatever." Okay? But to get to that change, we'll say it was on page, whatever, 5. We don't have to read through all those pages, then you come back. So if you have an issue, a problem, a question, whatever, bring it up to one of those, you know, meetings. Bring it up at a time that it's appropriate to ask that question. There's no need to read every single thing, especially 250 pages. There's not. Look through it. I'm not saying it's perfect. If there's an issue, if there's a question, sure. That's the whole thing, is to make it more efficient, because that one question, which, and we found it in meetings in the past, there's a typo, there is an error, whether it be legal, whether it be whatever it may be, okay? Absolutely, point noted, we'll make a correction, and that's fine, that's where it's supposed to be done. But there's no need for the, you know, 99% of the other stuff left over to keep on going over it. That's all accurate, it's all correct, you know? So I think that the more notice they get ahead of time, and the more accurate those records are, it's better for everybody that we do not read 250 pages for one article.
So at the Fall Town Meeting, we did have the voter's guide out about a week ahead of the Fall Town Meeting, if I remember right?
We did, yes.
And we'll try to do even better for the annual town meeting, because the process that we're using now should let the selectmen have the final budget vote by the first session. that we're using now should let the Selectmen have the final budget vote by the first, second week in April, which gives the Advisory Committee a couple of weeks, and this Voters' Guide, we're able to include the Advisory Committee's comments, so that everybody had it all in the one consolidated book. One of the challenges, I will say, about making amendments on the town meeting floor on the fly, there's mistakes. There are mistakes in your bylaws, where the intent was to do this, somebody thought it should be here instead, and they went too fast, and there was a numbering mistake, or a section got dropped, or something. So, that's why we try to get the information out as early as possible, and so there's possibly starting a little bit earlier, has been one suggestion that's been made, trying to get more meetings, more information out there. Codification hearing here, January 15, Tuesday, January 29, 6:30, a meeting about town meeting. Now, you've mentioned some other towns do some other things, to try to make sure that, well, to keep people's attention throughout the meeting, I guess I should say.
If I could just go back real quick.
Sure, please.
On the Voter Guide, I think that's excellent, I really do, I support that. What I like to see in the Voter Guide is similar to, we'll say, just like a ballot question, if you vote yes, this is what it is, if you vote no, this is what it is. There's no opinions, there's no, it's more factual than anything. The relationship between the Board of Selectmen, or the town, and the Advisory Committee has been much better, and we try to make that better every time. Their information is just as important, they get their input in the side of the Voters' Guide, and I think that's good. So, again, if I don't know enough about it, I'm reading things like this, well, the Advisory Committee says this, the town says this, that's good.
And I thought that was really very good, that we were able to get the Advisory Committees...
Yes, it makes a difference.
And, you know, they were able to stand up, make their statement, it was brief, it was to the point, I thought each one has been an improvement. But back to those, some interesting ideas that people have suggested, to keep the meeting, to keep everybody, you know?
So, again...
Energized and interested.
Within our rules of the town meeting times, and different opportunities, like you said, speaking with different towns, whatever, there are a couple of different options that we can do. The, I guess, pick it out of a hat, if you will, for lack of better words.
The number?
So, what they'll do is, we'll take all the articles, you know, one through however many, we'll put them inside of a hat, and we'll pick them out, okay? So, we pick out an article, and this is the article, this is what we're gonna read, this is how we're gonna do it, that's one way you can do it, and I know you know more about this, but one of the issues with that is, the, sometimes you have one article, and it relates to another article, which is very important to working together, can't have one without the other.
Right.
So, if we did do that, and we picked an article, we would definitely have to go with the next article that's related to it, without picking again.
And I have heard of some towns that do that, they do it with a bingo wheel, or they do it with a pulling the number out of the hat. The only thing being that they need to remember, so, let's say there's an article for land acquisition in eminent domain, and the first article is to put money in place to pay for the second article, you gotta always do the first article, similar to, it was the meals tax.
Correct.
There was an article to adopt the meals tax, and then if the meals tax was adopted, to spend a certain amount of money. So, that could be interesting, because you never quite know when your article might be coming up, and you could leave just as it's about to happen. That would certainly keep folks, I think, energized and involved.
Again, as a moderator, because I'm there from the very beginning to the very end, I don't have the option to leave. Article 1 is just as important as the very last article.
Now, I have had some questions asked of me on the petitioned warrant articles, how those are placed, and the practice that the board's been following since I've been here, and pretty much every other town I've ever been at, is that the petition warrant articles always were at the end, in the order in which they were timestamped in. And I know the meeting could always overrule the moderator, and move the order, do some different things, but just in case you're wondering, that's how they get placed, at the end, in the timestamped order by which they come in.
So, I definitely try to take that in consideration, again, on your behalf, because I understand there is a lot of work getting all this information, putting the articles together, doing all that work that you do, that people don't see. So, to change the order, or to change the way that this meeting's going, they don't understand that the work you put in to change it, the reasons why, the how, the, this is the way it is. Now, the moderator can say, yes, no, whatever, we're going with Article 1, then we're going with Article 2, then all the way through, okay? The moderator can also say, we're gonna, you know, do a bingo, pick from a hat, whatever. And I think it's a perfect opportunity, especially for that meeting coming up, for people to express how they like it to go. I think it's a good idea, saying, that way is perfect, don't change a thing, okay? Or, we need this changed, because of these, yeah, well, let's hear your input.
And I think what we do when we put the notice together of this, not every, you can always make every meeting, if it's agreeable with you, if someone has a suggestion or a question, and they just can't make it there that night, they have to work or something, we'll have them mail the town clerk with that question, or that suggestion, or mail it to you directly, whatever, so we can make sure we're getting that information in here.
Absolutely, yeah, sometimes people have other obligations, they get it, maybe you can't make that date and that time.
Right.
But the whole goal is to let people know, this is possibly what's gonna happen.
That we're open for ideas.
We are open, we're definitely open. What would you like to see? We wanna hear from you. We would like to, you know, and some people do probably, you know, maybe they're nervous of the camera, okay? Maybe they don't wanna come to a meeting, maybe whatever, a simple email, you could do it in old-fashioned way of mailing something, you know, put a stamp on it, and let us know what you'd like to have done, whatever, I don't care how it is, just contact us and say, yes, this is good, this is not good, and that's what we're looking for, is input to make it better.
And I wanna be clear, that's not just a, once a year, something's coming up, this is any time of the year, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
You're open, I'd like to think we're open in our office.
Absolutely.
Yourself.
And because of my other job, I definitely see a lot of people in town, I get input from them, what's good, what's bad, so, I take that into consideration as well. Again, I'm here as a moderator, however, I'm me, so, whether you see me on the police side, or the moderator's side, whatever, it doesn't matter, the information's still getting relayed, so contact me however you can.
We work for the...
Of course, right.
So, on these town meetings, and this bylaw codification that's coming up, I and the department heads and others, you know, we do put some effort into trying to have a, you know, thoughtful, orderly warrant that's error-proof, and you do your best to get us through the meeting, and let everybody be heard, but let us all get home the same day that we start the meeting on, and then you have to certify it all, but that doesn't mean it's all done, does it? That doesn't mean that that bylaw is all of a sudden in effect, you have some work to do at your end, right?
Right, I have to submit the information to the Attorney General's Office, and then they in turn have 90 days to get back to me with their recommendations on whether they're gonna approve it, or if they have any things that we need to change.
And they can approve it in whole, approve it in part, disapprove it in part, disapprove it in whole.
Correct.
They've got a wide range of things they can do, right?
They do, and then after they do approve it, then that has to be posted also.
Okay, and in fact, that's one of the added bylaws, changes on the trench bylaw, we have quite a few comments from the Attorney General's Office, if I remember correctly.
Yes, we did have a lot, so that's what the attorney now is working on, is getting all that in order.
And the codification, there's some, like the Attorney General may have approved it when it was originally adopted, this has to do with the residency bylaw for sex offenders.
Correct.
The Supreme Court of Massachusetts, they get to override the Attorney General if they want.
They can, yes.
So, we've got quite a few pages there that need to just come out completely. So, this has been a good conversation, I think, a lot of conversation about what happens at a town meeting, our effort to get information out to you, because we do live, sleep, eat, breathe this stuff. By the time it's the town meeting, you've sat through a couple of presentations of your budget, dozen hours with Town Council coming up, and actually, we've probably got more than a dozen hours into codification easily.
Right.
Because this has been not just a, let's smash it together and move some numbers, this has been a right-from-the-ground-up review of everything.
It's gonna be great for the town, though.
And, you know, then we'll have gone through all the meetings and everything. So, you know, we've got the codification hearing coming up, everything will be posted by December 20, you'd say?
Correct, correct.
On the web, with a public meeting here in this room on January...
15th.
15th?
At 6:30.
At 6:30, and then we'll take everything, all those suggestions, questions, and do draft number, what are we up to now, draft number 4, draft number...
Yeah, at least.
Draft number 5.
Yes.
A lot of work.
But that'll still give an opportunity for February, March, and April.
Right.
Then with the moderator, and I do hope you can join us on the 15th, we're gonna have Tuesday, January 29th, 6:30.
6:30.
Final location to be determined, have folks give you suggestions, compliments, bouquets, slings, arrows, all of that, on what can be done to improve a town meeting. And for many people, they may say, look, this is, it's just fine, everyone needs their opportunity, and we're prepared to sit there and make sure everybody gets that full-time. Dog registration...
January 1st to May 31st.
And...
I'm sorry, March 31st.
Registration for a town meeting and town election?
That would be...
April...
April 25th, and we'll be open from 7:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
And you talked about vital records, we didn't touch upon that a little bit, that's births, deaths, marriages, online availability?
You can order them online, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And they can pay for those online?
They can pay for them online, and then we will mail them to you.
Okay, so that, for many of our services, we truly are a click away 24/7.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything you'd like to add, Madam Clerk, I know that, how did we do on time, did we get you, did you survive it okay?
I survived, yes.
Okay, anything you'd like to add?
No, I think I'm good, I think this was a good...
Great.
Good time.
And do please come, and if you have questions, you just can get here, Town Clerk's email's online, mine is, and I think the moderator's is as well. Mr. Moderator, questions, thoughts from you as we go to try to wrap up here?
I was just looking through my notes, I think we covered a lot of it. I can only say that everything that we've tried to do is fair and more efficient, you know, I don't think for any reason of any, we've ever gone backwards, you know, everything we've done is like, yeah, that worked out pretty good, you know, so...
The consent agenda, we used to have a number of articles that were voted on singly, now we do them all in one package, that kind of thing?
And again, the work you put into this, getting all that stuff together, I don't think a lot of people recognize or realize that this is the way it's done, how it's done, why, so, if we can make that even better, we're open, that's... Sure, I'm not against, you know, unless it's a crazy, crazy idea, which...
Well, even sometimes there, they'd say, well, geez, I'm not sure that would work, but, you know, what if we, you know, made a kind of a twist on this a little bit, that might work, and that person, well, you know, but may, sometimes there's a few twists and turns involved in getting across the finish line.
It's always an adventure, however, we've got through them all, we'll get through the rest in the future, and I'm not...
And we do have the other auditorium reserved for this, this spring's Annual Town Meeting, right?
Yeah, the auditorium, yes, we do.
Folks, I do wanna remind you that the clerk, although she's paid, I'm paid to be here, moderator is effectively a volunteer, there's no pay for his position, and there are many other volunteer positions like his throughout the community, whether it's with Templeton Community Television, you know, the gent behind the camera, the other volunteers that helped do this work, so we can bring these informationals, the Capital Planning Committee, so that by the time you see that warrant article on, you know, spending $180,000 on a six-wheel dump truck, you've got members of the Capitol Committee that can explain, yep, we looked at the number, this is why we recommended it, the Advisory Committee, Boards of Health, our library. Many of these are either elected or appointed positions, and please feel free to reach out to us to see what might be available, and by all means, consider trying to find some time out of your busy life to assist this town that you live in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carol Harris, our town clerk, Derek Hall, our town moderator, appreciate it, have a good evening.